So it is 7:09. We'll call the meeting order.
So moved.
Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Danny?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it's unanimous. We'll start out with the walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins here? None? Great. We will move on to item number three, which is the use of town-owned land for affordable housing unit. Mr. Lane?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Rich. How are you?
Good, Mr. Austin. Thanks.
Good. Just the formalities. Rich Lane?
Oh, Richard Lane, Lawson Terrace.
Great.
Thanks. I'm here to ask that you give consideration to sponsoring an article to go before the people who care enough to go to town meeting in the fall to put up a parcel of town-owned land that would be deeded over to Habitat for a single-family dwelling.
Great. Just a little bit of background. Is this number two or three?
This would be number three.
Number three. And the other ones are?
Next to the police station was the first one. Stockbridge Road in conjunction with the Housing...
The word.
Affordable Housing Partnership. They're building a duplex in Habitat. We'll build a single-family home there. Once they get everything sorted out, it's... Because it's a dual project, it's a little more complicated than a single-family Habitat, so they're... They're almost ready. They're getting there.
Good. So this one's done?
Yes.
It's been... Someone's been in there for years now?
Uh, yeah. It went to a Situate resident, a single father with four children. He actually...
And this one is construction... Started to get on this?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, so when's that? This year?
I would hope, yeah. Before the end of the year.
Great. And if you can just take a second to tell us about where this one is, where the property is that you're looking for?
This is a lot that the town has possession of that's off of Hathley Road. It's sort of a pizza slice-type lot. It's on... The actual address is Zero Wood Ave. It butts Eli Hathley and Wood Ave. Elevationally, it's above the floodplain and velocity. It's a small lot, thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-one square feet and a ten thousand square foot zoning. The building commissioner, Mr. Duggan, took the footprint of the proposed Habitat house and laid it out within the envelope of which the house could fit, and it does, without requiring any special zoning variances or anything. And it would be exactly like the house next to the police station.
I assume without the deck that goes over the line?
Right, right. Well, that deck you could. That's, um... Yeah. That's just the... The triangle he's saying is the building space.
Triangle is the building envelope which the house will fit without having any special hearings.
Great, so the deck would be as proposed.
Well, just to hear it.
You wouldn't even need one, no.
Oh, you wouldn't? Oh, all right.
You can deck your whole property without a... Without a very... A special permit, you can, if you want. That's why it can go over the line. That... What they're giving you in that triangle is what's called the building envelope.
Foundation. Great. All right. Um, discussion? Sean?
Well, um, Rich stopped by my office a little while ago, and then I had driven by. My biggest concern was it's a real dangerous stretch of road there. The turns and so forth. So my concern was, you know, can you get the driveway off Hathley Road? And it looks like, you know, he had already had... He was ready for that.
The Wood Ave address, and there'd be access from Wood Ave, not Hathley.
And just... Just one other thing. Richie, when you've done this before, do you... Do you talk to people around there at all?
Yes.
Do you? And you did on this one? That's awesome. Great.
So, no negative feedback, or what'd you get?
No. The people that I talked with and presented it to said that...
Bless you.
They were comfortable with it. Several of them were familiar with the property over here, and it's a modest house. It's not a McMansion, and that lot would never get developed otherwise, in that it's very small. It puts another house on the tax rolls again, on a piece of property that you're gaining nothing from, and the proviso would be that, again, this would go to a Situate family in the first go-around that... Because the town would put up the lands, a Situate resident, thirty-something coupled with two kids that are living in mom and pop's basement, would get first priority to be the recipient of the house.
And it's a single-family home?
Yes.
I mean, it's a great... A great group, you know. They do great... Good work normally in Situate, but in other towns.
One other question. Richie, if this looks like it's going to go forward, this is the new area that's being sewed, so we'd want to make sure a stub...
It is, and by that time, it would probably be... They would ask that a sewer connection would go with it versus having to put a $50,000 septic system on the site to keep it affordable.
But my question would be to have someone contact the contractor to put a stub there, so it could be tied in, so...
Sean, any?
No, I mean, I... As a trustee of the Affordable Housing Trust, we'd actually looked at this lot as one of the lots that we'd like to build on. But our reason for not going forward with it was that we'd already started with various other areas, and without trying to bite off more than we could chew, we decided to hold off on this specific lot. So seeing that you're looking to try to do it, I commend you for it, and I'm not going to say no, because I'm certainly a big proponent of affordable housing. So, I mean, I'm certainly supportive of it, but clearly, we were aware of it. And I think Laura Harbottle knows, because we looked at this property three years ago, or two years ago. I think it was three years ago before the, um... What was the whole, um... The report that came out, you know, from the woman from Hanover. What's her name? Never mind. It's a big, long name. But in any event, we were aware of it, so it's another area, and they should be spread out throughout town. That's a great location.
I think it's... The only input that I would have, and I support it, and I think it's a great idea, you know, you dealt with the concerns about that busy street and all, I'd just like to give people more than a meeting to come and see if there's any sort of oppositions to it. So I would suggest that maybe we don't make a motion tonight, but that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, give anybody a chance that wants to come in and speak about it for against at least two weeks to come and voice their opinion, and then I would... I would vote in favor of it.
That's... I think that's fair. I mean, it's last week of... Second-to-last week of August. People were away. Maybe they knew or didn't know about it. I know I got an email from somebody saying, "What was this about?" They thought it was about Stockbridge. So... And I know that the news is here tonight, and it'd be nice to have it reported, that there's a proposal before the board for it. I would agree. I'd say that's fair.
Two weeks isn't going to make any difference, is it?
And we can still get it on the warrant for the... For the special town meeting.
As far as I understand, yeah.
Great. So Sheila, can we just put it on the agenda early for the next meeting? And it looks like you kept the support of the three of us, you know, as it stands now, and we'll just give people a chance to digest it for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to item number four. Transfer of two parcels to open space to... Of open space to town. Mr. Bjorklund?
Hi. How are you?
Good. Just the formalities of your name and address.
Steve Bjorklund, 15 Captain Daniel Litchfield Lane. And this one's going to be pretty quick, I think. Off of Elm Street, we did the Tilden Estates subdivision, which is a flexible open space development. As part of that, we have to leave 30% as open space, either deeded to the town under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, or deeded to a nonprofit that will take care of the open space. And I'm here just to see if the town will accept the... It's actually three parcels of land, not two. One of the deeds, and you actually have draft deeds. One of the deeds is for the open space, which is actually two separate parcels of land. As you look at the plan, there's a small piece at the entrance to the subdivision, and a large parcel in orange towards the back of the subdivision. And I've also outlined the second deed, which is known as the Tan House... Tan Brook Protection Parcel, which is the blue parcel at the bottom of the plan here. The blue parcel is all wetlands, and the other parcel is mixed between wetlands and uplands.
And that...
About it.
There were one piece in the front. I don't see that in the... Where's?
One of the deeds shows two separate parcels. If you go to the second page of the deed.
Oh, so it's there. I'll get you.
Small parcel in the front's only about 6,000 square feet.
Right there. Great.
So why would we want to take for open space that little sliver parcel B, other than having you... Having the subdivision fill the requirements of open space? To me, it's like, open space for what? It's like, wouldn't the town be better served by having it a part of somebody's property to pay taxes on than keeping that little sliver open space?
It's... I mean, it was designed to be a buffer for the next-door neighbor, and basically meets the curb that comes in with the roadway.
That's... That was my first question I had on it. The second question I had on the project was, I noticed in the area that you've colored in orange, being the uplands, what kind of... I could make out some of the wetland delineation, but what kind of walking path or trail do you have? Something that's going to be used potentially, or...
Yeah.
And the reason why I'm asking, Steve, is this. You've got a cul-de-sac there, which is... What's it called? What's the street going... Whatever the street's going to call it.
Angelene Drive, I believe, is in the road.
Okay. Then you have Penfield, and then you also have Huey. And it would be very... I would think, from just a global perspective, any way of being able to link some of these neighborhoods, because people on Huey can't get to Elm Street without having to go around the whole distance if there's some way of being able to cut through. And if we... The town's going to have open space, in my mind, some form of path or potential for the future, some kind of like walkway or sidewalk or something that people could bike kids from those sections across. I mean, is there an ability to do something like that?
Well, what we've done as part of our subdivision is we've actually left an access easement from the cul-de-sac back into the open space across what's known as Lot Eight. And this is a detention basin parcel here, so they'll have access across the edge of the detention basin, which is basically a grassed area. And there's also a walking easement across Lot Three near the front of the subdivision. In the future, we have basically on the plan, and on the subdivision plans as well, a proposed pathway if the town wanted to do something in the future across the back of the subdivision. On the Tan Brook parcel down in here, unfortunately, we've got wetlands between Huey Road and where the upland is in our development. So as developers, we have to adhere to the bylaws in town, and there is a small stream that goes on the backside of Huey Road, which potentially has a non-disturbing zone around that. So I don't want to be the one to try and propose a pathway...
No.
...through the non-disturbing zone, but the town, if they want to, may be able to.
Steve, you'd never do that, would you? In your history, huh?
No. We actually looked into tying it into all the people on the west side of Penfield Road. Nobody was interested in providing any type of an easement to have people walk through their yards. And the kids actually do walk from Huey Road to the end of Penfield Road through the last house, and they kind of walk their bikes across a little wooden... You know, a wooden board that goes across the...
I only ask that because...
Not designated, but they do go through there. The kids do.
That was kind of my focus in saying, "We're not doing it this year or next year, but maybe in the long term." Somebody in their right mind might say, "Hey, guess what? Maybe we can go to CPC with maybe a bike path," and being able to kind of link that. And if the town's going to be taking that land instead of having it landlocked, it would make sense that we have an opportunity to kind of link these things to help those neighborhoods out and give them some relief. Third question I had was, it looks as though that the deed is proposed to have it go to Conservation.
Care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
That's not guaranteed... That's not necessarily... We don't... Are mandated to do that. In other words, couldn't we have it go to the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen, providing it's kept in perpetuity in open space, or that there'd be conservation restrictions with it? So we don't necessarily have to do it.
It's just a draft deed, so...
And my only reason for saying that is that I know that there are other parcels in town that are Conservation, but if they were the Board of Selectmen, we would be able to maybe do something like that, if that's what the board would like to do. That would be my only thought.
That's a good point.
I'd like to be able to have it go, providing it's not mandated in a flexible open space. I saw Laura, your memo, and I just didn't know whether or not we were mandated or obligated to have it deeded over to the Conservation, whether or not it could go to the Board of Selectmen.
I think it's in the zoning bylaw that it has to be in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Because the idea is that it's to offset what are usually going to be undersized lots. In this subdivision, they weren't undersized lots. It was just kind of excess land that was given over, and there were other benefits that the developer thought out of the open space. But they have to give up this 30%, and it has to be either town or the land trust, basically, so...
If you can just confirm that?
If you could... Yeah, that's... That's... I only ask that because if...
Just when you find it, let us know.
Thanks. Yeah, that was my only... My only... My observations. That's it.
And there are... There is a proposed trail, so I mean, Conservation is aware of the fact that this is set up for the town to be able to do a trail system if they want to in the future.
Steve, where's the wetlands line in the back of that?
If you can see it close here, there's a dotted line right here.
So...
Everything below that line is wetlands. Everything above that line is uplands.
Why isn't your blue line on that line, then?
It's two separate parcels of land.
Oh, just because of the land.
Sure, use different colors. Use the blue for the wetlands.
Well, I didn't... The wetlands was kind of irrelevant. It was more the parcels, as they reflected in the deeds, that we wanted to show the colors of.
So the 30% that you have to give up or give back to the town, 30% of your... Can be in the wetlands?
A portion of that can be wetlands, and a portion has to be uplands. And this is... This is an exact division of what we need to meet. We ended up with... The blue parcel is actually over and above the open space requirements that we would have to have...
But it's wet anyway.
For the subdivision. Right, so we just... We're just giving that to the town.
Right, because you're a nice guy.
No reason for us to keep it.
So is that why that little sliver is up there? Because is there some sort of percentage ratio that you have to have wet to...
Yeah.
So that's why these people in the first lot didn't have a...
Right.
A bigger piece of land?
Yeah.
And one other question. Steve, we were talking about it earlier. Did you... Can you loop the water main? What was... You really can't.
What's happening is, we were actually required to... We looked at bringing the water again out through Penfield Road to see if we could do that. We couldn't get an easement to do that. But with DPW and the planning board, what we're actually doing is looping the water main into our division, back out onto Elm Street again, so that the flow, instead of just bypassing and going down Elm Street, will now go through the subdivision and back out, so there'll be no dead end... No new dead-end water line out here. The other thing we're doing with this is we're also replacing about, I think it's 320... 320 feet of old water line in Elm Street in order to meet the fire protection requirements. So there will be...
You're replacing it?
We're doing it, yes. At our expense, from the back of the Beech Tree Farm subdivision, they actually were... They came out onto Elm Street and did a tie-in out there with a three-way gate system. We're going from there, tie-in up to our entrance, which will provide better fire protection for everybody in this area.
Could you have gone out, instead of going back the way you came in, could you have gone out across someone's property, or you just can't do that, Steve? I don't... You wouldn't have gained that much?
There was nobody that was willing to give up, you know, an easement from the wall.
Well, but it's all your... It's all your development, though.
No. Our development, actually, this... This line here is all other people.
Oh, all right.
So the only entrance we had was this parcel, about 150 feet across right here.
Okay, all right. And now I can see.
I mean, I could have... We could have separated it by...
Yeah, it doesn't matter, right.
75 feet or something, and done that, but...
Okay.
That didn't make any sense.
That's... That's all.
You have two more questions, Steve. Just... This is not our purview, but I'm... It's always an issue that you hear about sidewalks. Are there sidewalks in the subdivision?
Sidewalks in the subdivision, yeah.
The other question?
There is not one on Elm Street, but there is one in our subdivision. So if the town ever decides to put one on Elm Street, they'll be able to link right into this.
Second question I had was with respect to, I'm assuming this is going to be a private way?
Eventually, we hope to have this accepted by the town.
Okay, so I ask that because there are a lot of subdivisions that were privately, and they're not... Now they're being brought forward, and are these going to be up to the subdivision standards, or are they...
If you'll remember, when you did Cornerstone Estates, which was one that we built that was kind of equivalent to this, I think we came up with about $500 worth of work that had to be done to bring it up to the standard for the town to accept it. It needed a sign and one other thing.
A few more things, but it was... It was not as...
The standard of the roadway, the construction of the roadway, the sub-basin and all that, is done to the subdivision standards, the depth of gravel and all those things. So it will certainly be a... One of the nicest roads in town.
Now, does everyone that's buying the property here understand that they're on a private way?
Yes. Well, no, they don't, because they're not there yet.
Right, but...
But when they do get there, they will understand that. There's covenants. There's all kinds of restrictions they have to abide by, and I wish we had 15 lots sold, because then I'd give you that answer.
But Steve, that's not your intention to keep it a private way, unless I just misunderstood.
No, it is not.
And it's no advantage to a... For a developer to keep it a private way?
No.
Right.
So there's no reason, once this is built, that we should...
It's going to get turned right over.
...easily accept it, because it's been built to our very own standard.
That's right, right.
It's just a matter of it done, and then the performance bond's released from the planning board, and then we go to a town. In the perfect way that it should have been happening.
All along.
And then, as soon as he's done and that's released, it goes in the next warrant and accepted as a public way.
What happens, and it happened with Cornerstone Estates, and it's different than some of the older roads that you dealt with...
Sure.
...that needed a tremendous amount of work to bring them up to a standard that the town should accept. When you do a flexible open space development, there are certain waivers that we ask for in regards to road width and things like that, but it doesn't make the road substandard construction. It just changes some of the requirements that are in subdivision control law. So the road is still going to be a very high-quality road, five inches of pavement and the whole nine yards. So it's going to be built properly, but there are certain waivers that were granted by the planning board. When it comes in front of you guys to accept it as a townway, you'll know exactly what standard that was built to. But there's none of those standards waived that will jeopardize the road in any way.
Now, if you can just help me out, the percentage of land that you have to give to some sort of conservation or trust is what, 30%?
30% of the development, yes.
And how... What percentage of that has to be dry?
I'm going to ask Laura, because I don't want to misspeak.
It's, um, 70... 70%.
So 30% can be wetlands. 70% of the required open space has to be upland.
21% has to be dry, and... And it is?
It's right on the square foot.
Okay, because it looks wetter where that line was.
No, but this is the reason why you have a separate parcel down in here. This parcel is not part of the subdivision, okay? The subdivision border is the open space, which is up here. That's why you've got a deed for this open space...
I see.
...and a deed for this open space. The parcel down here, which was the Tan House or the Tan Brook parcel, has nothing to do with the subdivision. We're just offering it to the town if the town will accept it. That's not a requirement... I don't think that was written as a requirement to the town. Take that piece. We're just offering that. It is a requirement that you take the other two parcels.
I understand, yeah.
Just so people understand, the significance of the Tan Brook parcel is that it's part of our water aqua fort, so you want to preserve... So, you want to preserve it and prevent any type of intrusion or leaking or anything that could go into it, so, that's a good thing.
Tricia looked into the tax ramifications of the property, and I think it's something like five hundred dollars a year for, for all of them, or was it two hundred? It was, it was two hundred dollars a year for all the properties, so it's really not a burden, you know, a financial issue for the town to take this. Any other discussion? So, so Steve, are you asking us to take all three properties?
Yeah. It's written in two deeds.
Did you find the verbiage in the bylaw?
Yeah, it is required to be, to be accepted by conservation.
It is. Okay, so how do you want to handle it?
So, what, can you do me one favor, Laura? What is that, what is that section? I'm not trying to put you on, I just need to know what it is. Thirteen point six...
I'm sorry, five fifty?
Five fifty. Okay. Thank you.
And I'd only ask one further thing. We, we have a slight bit of grading that's going to happen at the entrance, at the edge of this parcel here. So, what we're trying to do is to get the town to accept the land. We don't want to deed, actually deed the land to the town until we get that portion done and regraded and reseeded in that area, so that there's no liability to the town. We'd rather work on it while we own it.
Very conscientious.
So, let me ask you this, though, Steve. The only property that you're obligated to sell to the town, or to the, for conservation purposes, are the orange areas?
Two orange pieces.
Okay. And we have two deeds or three deeds?
There's two deeds. One deed has the two parcels that are in orange.
And the other one is...
The other one is for the other piece.
So, so tonight, obviously, Town Council would have to look at the deeds and, and do all that sort of stuff. Do we want to, you want to proceed to make a motion to accept it? Do you want to accept two, the two parcels we have to, or all three parcels? I guess those are our decisions. John brings up a good point, that the, the blue area is part of the aqua fort, and it's, you know, better to have it under our control than, than not. Anything else?
My, my proposal would be to say, okay, um, would be to say, accept the properties as proposed, except that the Tan Brook parcel would be transferred to the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen, uh, obviously for open space and for, um, you know, conservation reasons. And the other two, I guess if, if that's what the, the section five fifty point six E says, then we can't do that. Otherwise, I'd say, yeah, convert, can be to the Board of Selectmen, but, um...
So, if we want to accept it, let's do a motion.
So, what, we'll, we'll make two motions. One to accept in orange, in, in the hands of CONCOM, and the blue will be...
With the provision of Town Council and us going over these deeds.
All right, I'll do the, how about this? I'll vote to accept as a gift and transfer to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission, parcel, uh, parcels of land in Situate, shown as open space parcel A, on a plan, and B, on a plan of land entitled Tilden Estates, a definitive, flexible, open space development plan at seventy-seven Elm Street in Situate, Massachusetts, dated January twelfth, two thousand and eleven. Period.
Second.
Why don't we say, with the caveat of review of the deed?
Uh, I, I, I'll move to amend with the, um, I guess, with the caveat that Town Council reviews, um, the, the deed and the, the transfer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I'll take of, um, I move to, uh, vote to accept as a gift and transfer to the care and custody of the con- of the Board of Selectmen, um, land in Situate, Massachusetts, shown as Tan Brook Protective Parcel on a Plan of Land Entitled Plan of Land in the Town of Situate, Massachusetts, seventy-seven Elm Street, dated March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
With the caveat of...
With the caveat that Town Council, um, reviews it, and, um, period.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Laura, do you have anything?
Um, no, I just wanted to, uh, point out, in this section, it, it doesn't specify a conservation commission, but it does say, "All open space shall be preserved by donation to the town for conservation purposes." So, I'm assuming that that means, you know, for the care and custody of the conservation commission.
Doesn't sound like that.
I, 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 I'm going to modify my motion on the first one.
Can you just do me a favor and read that again?
Okay. "All open space shall be preserved by donation to the town for conservation purposes."
That, that clearly does not say, "To the conservation..."
All right, I'm going to move, I, I like...
You like the second one?
The second one, I, I, I'm fine with.
Okay, so, do you have any, do you have any feedback on the second one?
Do I?
No. Okay. All right, so we have a second. All those in favor of the motion for the Tan Brook Protective Parcel?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's unanimous.
I'd like to move to, um, rescind or vacate my earlier motion, which was to, um, move the gift and transfer it to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Second to rescind?
Point of order, rescind the vote, not the motion, rescind the vote.
Rescind the vote.
Rescind the vote.
Because you voted on that.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'll make a motion again. This time, I'll vote to move to accept as a gift and transfer to the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen, parcels of land in Situate, shown as open space parcels A and open space parcel B, on a plan of land entitled Tilden Estates, a definitive, flexible, open space development plan at seventy-seven Elm Street in Situate, Massachusetts, and dated January twelfth, two thousand and eleven.
With the approval of...
With the approval of Town Council.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
And I'm sure Town Council will look at that to make sure that that will not invalidate our special permits for the development.
Yes. If we find that it has to be CONCOM, then we'll, we'll change it to there.
Sheila, if you need me to tell you what the motions are, I'll, I'll do that afterwards.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura.
Steve, thank you.
Okay. Move on to item number five, which is the building permit fee for solar panels. Ms. Harbottle?
I know that you're all familiar with the Solarize Situate program, which has been, um, kind of promoted, um, through Town Hall and on the website and, and so on. And the main purpose of that program is to try to get Situate residents a better deal on installing solar panels. And to make it more, um, enticing for private property owners to put on solar, one of the things that we were recommended to take a look at was to reduce the building permit fee for solar panels. And, um, from talking with Neil, Neil Duggan, the usual fee is about three hundred dollars. We discussed this, we came up with a, uh, proposal to reduce it to a hundred and fifty dollars. I have to say, unfortunately, it doesn't look like there's going to be an overwhelming, um, response to this program. You know, so far, there've really only been a handful of people whose properties qualify and who are actually going to do it. I don't know, you know, at the end of the day, how many people will sign up for it. But anyway, we were interested in proposing this reduction in the building permit fee to try to make it a little more, um, attractive to people.
Do surrounding communities charge about the same?
That, I really, I unfortunately couldn't tell you.
Okay. And it's a drop from three hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars for the green initiative. Does this have any impact on the solar array?
No, I don't believe so, no, because that's not under this program.
So, it would have to be under...
It would only be for people subscribing to this Solarize Situate program.
Is that the way it reads?
Although we, we could make it everyone, but I think the idea was just...
Well, it says, it's pretty vague, to set a maximum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars for a building permit for installation of solar panels. I don't know what...
Yeah, I think, um, Tony, that's a good catch. It should be specifically for this program.
For residents.
I guess by way of background, Situate's one of four communities statewide that have been selected to participate in this program, so, um, this is an additional incentive. We had a ton of initial interest. There's also an event, help me out, Laura.
It's the Solarize Situate barbecue.
Thursday.
Thursday, that the board's invited to, um, to encourage a number of people. What we're finding is that many, many people expressed an interest, but when they look at the various thresholds to qualify, that's when they're sort of falling off. But we still want to encourage as many people and incentivize them to, if they're able to do this, and it's something that works for them, to, to help them along that way. And this is just another proactive step in that regard.
And I think that's, this is one of those things where a couple of people do it and find it successful, and then it has legs of its own, and it grows from there. I've actually heard a couple of people talking about it, so, um...
Okay.
Is, is this with, um, so this would be, um, is this program, is it under, s- what's the program?
Is it a state program?
What's, what's it just?
Uh, it's, it's through the state. It's the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, which is sponsoring it.
So, in other words, I'm trying to fashion a motion, that's what I'm trying to do here. So, I'm saying, is it Solarize Situate, is that the program?
Oh, it's Solarize Situate.
So, it's like, okay. So, how about a motion, um, vote to, uh, set a maximum fee of a hundred and fifty dollars for a building permit for installation of a, of solar panel, panels for residents who apply under the Solarize Situate program?
Second, so would you like?
Great.
All right, okay, second.
Further discussion? Mr. Bjorken?
Yeah, Steve, I have just a quick question. Is there also an electrical permit that's required for this?
Um, I imagine there is.
Because the building permit will just handle putting up the arrays on the roofs, but there's probably also an electrical permit that's required for electricians to tie into these existing systems. So, you might want to look at doing the same thing with the electrical permits.
How much is the...
That, I, I don't know of the time I had.
It's not a flat fee, Steve? Uh, the electrical wouldn't be a flat fee?
The electrical may be a flat fee, because most of these systems are probably going to be about the same size.
Right.
I think they're looking to try and do five KW systems for everybody. But, you know, again, I don't know if it's a hundred dollars for an electrical fee, but Laura could certainly come back in and talk to the electrical inspector and see if they might be able to get that one down to fifty or something, or...
Yeah.
Very good point.
It's an incentive, yeah.
So, we're going to leave that in your court to find out about that. Maybe you can find out at the barbecue, we'll give it a little publicity. Wednesday, solar, Thursday, excuse me. And where is it?
It's at the Pier forty-four.
Situate, Mariner.
Situate, Harbor Building. Harbor Community Building.
Yeah, Situate Community Harbor Building, formerly known as Pier forty-four. It's Thursday.
It's going to say, five to seven.
Five to seven.
You need dinner?
And everyone is invited.
Great. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, and you, you'll get back to us on the electrical component.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Item number six, uh, discussion of a facilities manager.
Um, I included in the board's packet a draft job description for a position that, um, I'd like the board to contemplate and consider for placement on the fall town meeting warrant. Um, I also provided some supplemental information to you earlier this week. I think, um, we've had individual conversations over the last several months about the need to better coordinate our public buildings. And one of the things that, that's really happened is between the wind turbine, the solar way, the Solarize Situate, the Green Communities, the ESCO project, the Gates RFP, the Pier forty-four Study Committee. It's all a very, um, concerted effort to get a feel for what our future public building needs are, especially on the non-school side, and to get our arms around what the capital needs are, what the investment should be, and really what the appropriate functional use of it. As I've mentioned in my email, all of that work, um, that I just described has been done under the auspices of either the Renewable Energy Committee, the Public Building Commission, the Pier forty-four Study Committee. But the administrative part and the coordination has been done by Laura Harbottle and Al Banger. And none of those responsibilities really would typically reside in a job description that you would find in another community for those duties. We've essentially created this position by virtue of our initiatives with the board and the town's goal of being energy efficient. So, um, so I think it's really appropriate to have this type of position in place. In addition to that, the ongoing maintenance, the coordination of inventorying supplies like cleaning supplies, toilet paper, paper towels, uh, regular, once-a-year building things like cleaning of windows, cleaning of carpets, um, loss control, ensuring that when the insurance inspector comes for our general liability and there's building safety issues noted and things like that, those are taken care of. All of that doesn't have, uh, one set of eyes looking at it, that it's very decentralized. So, what this proposes to do is to create, um, a facilities management department, similar to what we undertook with Y- IT, by placing, uh, department head-level status individual in that position, and to eventually grow that department, um, so it can encompass all town and school buildings. But right now, there are a number of barriers to having anybody sort of walk in and take over oversight of all of those collective bargaining, uh, and other issues are involved. But, um, it's something that I believe is really important, and given that the wind turbine and the ESCO project are all in play now, I'm bringing to you for a fall town meeting as opposed to, uh, the annual town meeting. I did circulate the job description to the chairs of the Public Building Commission and, uh, the chair of the Renewable Energy Committee. I got feedback from both of them. I provided this draft job description to Dr. Martin two months ago and solicited her input, um, to let her know, um, that this is in the, the discussion stage. So, um, I'm bringing it to you tonight for initial discussion, not to, to get your read, so we can, as we get further into the issues and planning for a special town meeting, and, you know, where we're headed.
Great. Before we start, Paul, can you open that door? Anne, can you open that door?
It's dying.
It's been a little hot in here.
Thanks.
So, great, and I, um, you, as always, when, when Tricia gives us, I mean, the, the detail in this job description, you know, is very, very detailed, I guess. And, uh, you know, it's very encompassing, and it, it's, really gives a good sense of what the project is. So, we see that you've thought it out very well. You gave us some statistics a while ago, the number of buildings that we have and the property value of all those buildings in this town. And it was really, you know, shocking how much it is, how many buildings we actually have to take care of.
Fifty-five, fifty-five structures that are insured by the town.
So, fifty-five structures worth tens of millions of, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, probably. And right now, there's really no specific control of that. It's kind of cut up between different people, and it's part of their job. And, um, I see this as another position that takes the town to another level, like the IT, you know, where we're actually advancing the services that we provide the town. And I think it's a, it's a great idea. Obviously, the, the question will come, is how are we going to pay for it? And, um, um, you know, that's kind of your job. You've told us that, you know, we have money now to pay, to do it in the fall, but obviously, it will be a recurring expense, and you've got to make your budget work. So, there'll be, it'll work somehow, or there'll be cuts in, in some other area to make, to make this funded, so...
Yeah, and the other thing, and I think it was in the supplemental information, this is a position that is constantly being created and filled right now in municipalities. Marshfield just did it, Hanover just did it, um, and that's only in our immediate area. And I think I saw three or four in the MMA Beacon in the last two months. So, it's something, some are just being created around the Green Communities Initiative, just to oversee that slash ESCO. We have that, plus our grant from Solarize Mass, plus the turbine, plus, um, the solar array. And even though a lot of the solar array and the wind turbine, Paul Reedy tells me, is going to be outsourced for maintenance, there still needs to be someone who's looking at the terms of those lease, the lease payments, the infrastructure and capitalization and things like that. So, in and of itself, just those alone for the new initiatives we started in the last two years is probably a full-time job in and of itself.
And that's what I meant to bring up, you're showing your public this, too, is the savings that we're going to get from the green initiatives are going to more than fund, fund this position.
And I think that's going to be a huge primary purpose of this job And I think that's going to be a huge primary purpose of this job is to ensure that ESCO, once it goes in, has a set of eyes looking at it to make sure we're getting those identified savings.
Took, took the words right out of my mouth, but even, I was going to say one other thing. I wouldn't be surprised if it's required to, um.
Get the funding?
Yes, yes, thanks, yeah, to get the funding in some of those programs you just mentioned. That almost seems like it would be part of the criteria, but, but like Tony said, it's, you know, this person could very well pay for himself, him or her, in six months.
Well, I think, you know, the thing that, you know, we sort of talked about, but hasn't been really made clear, is there's been a tremendous amount of administrative and management work done by Laura and Al for where we've gotten so far, whereas other communities have a building maintenance department or another individual or assistant town manager to really shepherd those kinds of things in. And that's all been done by Laura and Al with the help of our, you know, Renewable Energy Committee and, and, and stuff like that, but, um, you know.
Or we pay for consultants.
We don't want to blow this investment in, in what we're doing forward. So we need someone outfitted by education and experience to make sure our investments are, are being handled well.
Any?
Yeah, I, I totally, fully support it. I mean, you know, I'm sure there are people going to say, oh, yeah, you're creating another position and tape, you know, somebody's going to have to pay for it, and, you know, the overall. The reality is, we have fifty-five buildings, structures, and you're having two department heads from DPW and planning administering a lot of this stuff. I mean, it's, it's, you know, then that takes time away from what they're supposed to be doing when you're dealing with the roads and other, um, public work issues. And then you've got the planner doing, it, it's, it's about time that the town gets into the 21st century and deals with these issues.
To the point, the same with the IT director, I cut out of the budgets because I set the priorities for what I think the town needs based on your approvals, but, and that's the way this will work. If this is a priority that I think needs to be done, then it will be at the expense of other things.
Great, well, it's just a discussion tonight, so we don't need a motion.
I'll give you one if you want, no.
Rick will be back, um, next week.
Joe's in favor, I, I just have a brief.
Shortly as well, so, um, we'll get their feedback shortly, and then, um, we'll have plenty of time to get on the, on the, uh.
Yeah, for further discussion, yep.
Great. Uh, move on to item number seven, which is, uh, street layouts for acceptance of public ways. Kevin?
Good evening. Well, for you tonight, for street acceptance, the Street Acceptance Committee voted to recommend to the board that the, these three streets move forward for consideration for acceptance as public ways by town meeting at the fall town meeting, tentatively planned for late October. For Simmon Drive, Hickory Lane, and Beach Tree Farm.
As, uh, chairman of the board's selectmen, you also get to be chairman of the streetways acceptance. So I've been at these meetings, they've gone through all the steps. This is just the next step in the process. Most of these communities have agreed to a betterment, um, to, to pay to bring their street up to code. And now it's just the next step in terms of getting it, um, before the town, to see if the town accepts it. There's no expense to the town for these improvements. And like I said, some of these have been going on for months. I see some of the people in the audience that have been working on these, so, um, and it's great because then there's no liability, and, and the town's, uh, expands its, its highway and street mileage, and, uh, we take care of the streets, and they're up to the codes that the town wants, so.
Motion?
Not too much complexity to it. Motion?
Will the board's selectmen direct the DPW to prepare the necessary layout of the following streets as public ways? For Simmon Drive, Hickory Lane, Beach Tree Farm Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. I think the process after this is it goes to Planning Board. They look at it, and they give us their feedback in terms of whether they have any issues with it. We discuss that, and then at which point we'll vote to put it on the fall meeting, and then the town will vote as to whether or not they want to accept the streets. So, yes.
No, no, not about this, just before he leaves.
And we'll do, we'll do road layout also simultaneously while it's with the planning department.
Great. So we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous? Thank you. Kevin, I think Sean has.
Walnut Tree Hill, can you just give us an update? Or if you, I don't want.
I can, I was at the last meeting. Um, they've gone through and done the engineering for the area there, and they've got a, um, a number to complete the whole project. And now, um, it's the, that money is, or that, that project is being, going back and forth to the bondholders.
Good.
And I'm sure there'll be some back and forth between.
It's moving along, Tony?
Definitely moving along. The town has really taken the initiative to, to try and fight the battle for that community. And, um, I know Jim Toomey's group and Al have done a lot of work to get it, and we've hired consultants to do the.
Yeah, we hired, at our expense, an engineer to, to get a process.
Right, right, okay.
It's about, I think it was eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of work that needs to be done to get the whole project up to speed. So now it's, it'll be a tug-of-war with the insurance company to get them to agree to pay the money.
Right.
And then the work will be done.
Thanks.
Okay, move on to item number eight. Revised track, traffic rules and regulations schedule. I saw Dottie. Mark, how are you? Hi, Dottie, how are you?
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thanks.
Finally.
Yeah.
This has been an ongoing project for quite a while, I guess.
Yeah.
And, um, we're happy to finally present you with the copies. Those are grab copies insofar as with the changes are marked for you. A clean copy with, after, when you decide whether to accept or not, will be made. Did you all get a memo today?
Yes.
Follow-up memo? As most of the things in the rules and regulations, uh, this is just all the executive orders and changes that have been made over the years, and just updating the documents. The, uh, this one here, uh, it was pointed out to me today, was inadvertently omitted, although it was an executive action approved in June of 2006. And it was adding to the waterfront zones, um, in the harbor section, Front Street, Cole Parkway, and the town pier. We will be adding those to the, uh, document. The other, uh, update was Moreland Road, um.
Dottie, in this it says delete from Schedule One, Section Two. What does it ta, is it taking out of a different area?
Well, you know, we looked at that, and that, that wording came directly from the executive action in 2006. The regs have been sort of reorganized, so although the, uh, those streets have been put under the waterfront zone, there are no letter designations in that section any longer. It's just a list of all the streets and, that are included in the waterfront zone.
Okay. Great.
There's been a lot of renumbering of, of, you know, and just really organizing it, so we hope it will be easier for, uh, anyone that needs to look at it. The other, uh, change was in the copy you were given, um, the, uh, Section Two, the parking prohibitions, tow zone. Moreland Road, we needed a distance. Mark Thompson went out today, and the new wording will be the center of the right-of-way-to-the-spit, thirty-five feet, northeast to the no-parking tow zon, tow zone sign. And the sec, center of the right-of-way-to-the-spit, southwest, a hundred-and-ten feet to the existing no-parking tow zone sign. So all it was, was just making the language a little clearer, um, but the signs, they're there.
This was a lot of work, I mean, it, there wasn't, there weren't a lot of changes, per se, but, you know, when you go through a document that has all this, and adding a word or correcting a word here and there, it takes a lot of time to do it. So we appreciate the work that was done. I did like the language on the snowmobiles, that they're not allowed on public roads. But other than that, I didn't see anything that jumped out to me as, as any sort of crazy change to things.
I mean, the town has changed a lot since the last time this was updated, with, with the rail rail, with the new streets, with all of that. Hopefully, we've added all of that into this.
I, I found what it did is it ma, it took more details and, and really specified what a certain thing was as opposed to some vaguer language, so, um, yeah, good job. John or Sean, any?
Just a, just a general comment. During the winter, I've seen cars parked out on the road, and, and, and they may not be listed here. And it's, and Kevin, and then you're faced with the task of trying to clean the roads, whether you're, you know, de-icing or plowing. Is in here somewhere, I mean, at what point do they get towed? You know, they're, you know, I've heard of school buses having to make special, you know, maneuvers to get around them, let alone a fire engine. It's just not acceptable, it's just, you know, and I, anyone have any, either Brian or Kevin?
Steve, while the color's there, any, uh, anything in the P and snow? So the DPW wanted, and we, and they have, we've, they call us, and sometimes we'll try and get compliance and ask the people to move, but, um, sometimes we want to tow. That's, that's coming.
I just have two, great job, great job. It's, it's never easy to go through, um, bylaws and regulations and try to make changes. First to make sense of them tough, and then to try to make, improve them, and then everything else. So I commend the committee for doing it. Just, it, maybe outside of the scope of this, if somebody, you know, changing or putting stop signs, is that a part of the traffic rules and regulations? Is that, you know, so, here's why, somebody had approached me and said, geez, they would like to see on some of the minor streets in between Hadley and, and Turner and Oceanside, is an ability to put stop signs, so, you know, on those smaller streets, people stop. So they'd have to go before traffic rules and regs.
Usually we receive a request either through, oftentimes from citizens directly, from the selectmen's office, from the police department, um, asking us to look at some of those areas. And, um, oftentimes we do a site visit, um, we rely heavily on the police department. We us, we also have a member from, up at the FIE department on the committee. So usually, that's how we would look at that, and then make a decision based on what the state recommendations are, is that the way to put it, um, for doing that.
And the other question I had was speed limits is, um, I know at one time we're, I think we're talking about, I want to say Oceanside or Turner, or something, the state mandates. Do we have an idea of like what state, what streets we control versus are mandated by the state?
Speeds the state would control all of them.
All of them, so town does not have.
As far as the speed's concerned.
Wow.
We talked about that at the Hummer Rock meeting the other day.
Gotcha. All right, just that's a question I can answer people when they ask.
Yeah, the police brought up that sometimes it doesn't move in your favor. They do some sort of average speed on a road, and, uh, chief.
The formula is when eighty percent of the traffic is doing it, you know, sometimes you really just don't want to go there. And it's, it's, uh, surveys done by the state and for you, and I'm not critical of where you are. And so that, um, actually for years now, I think this came up once and a few years ago, too. There has been legislation filed statewide, state-wise, to, uh, to give that authority back to the citizens. It never, it's always a good fit. From what I understand, because they, they want to, uh, they want to keep uniform standards, and they want, uh, you know, they have a different standard than we do, or capacity, or whatever, so. You know, from, from myself, or my tendency, you know, the law that allows it, it doesn't seem like it's going to happen.
So it's based on an average of, of eighty percent? Traffic for the.
And it has to be, there's minimum, uh, numbers, um, in the, over period.
It gives me an idea, and the reason why I said it was because I talked to Kevin and Al about, at one point, we're talking about, if we redo the roads, then, you know, um, obviously nice roads, sometimes people tend to go faster, but if you put, like, plateaus, not speed bumps, but plateaus that go up and go down, that's going to reduce speed pretty, pretty much. Then it would average in, the fact, that factor of, of averaging the speed could lower the speed limit. You see what I'm saying? In other words, if you're driving up and driving down, driving up, you're not going to be going thirty miles an hour. You're going to be going like twenty or something, which would reduce speed, and the speed limit therefore would be reduced.
The, the problem with the existing situation is that, uh, first of all, the one, yeah, the road that was zoned in nineteen seventy-three by the state, the speed limit in my house is forty-five mile an hour. It's totally out of, out of touch with what's going on in there now as far as the number of people who walk and bike in, in the three subdivisions there now that weren't there in fifteen seventy-three. The way the statute is, is worded is, is still what's, what's reasonable and proper given the existing conditions. So theoretically, you could have a forty mile, I don't know, speed limit, but if there's fog, if there's ice, if there's snow, then you, you're obligated to go in the snow. So you can still, you can still cite for that, but, um, it just doesn't seem like the state's going to, the, I mean, I'm just going to keep up with that.
Thank you.
One more thing going forward, if I may. One of the things the committee would, would like to suggest is that going forward, there'd be a process set up so that all executive orders, the changes are made in the document, so that there won't be this gathering of information over, uh, nu, numerous years to update the document. So in order to keep it updated, um, someone, um, being the keeper of, of the document, and so that when executive actions are made, not only are they in someone's folder, but they're actually made, um, to the document itself. And the other thing would be that we would like to thank the former members of the committee, especially Paul Scott, Chief Stewart, and Arthur Wood, who gave a lot of time to this. Paul especially, he has more that he remembers, and it's amazing.
Now, who is the keeper of this document?
Well, it's my understanding, and I'm not sure of this, that the clerk, uh, town clerk, uh, must have a copy of it. But I did speak to Al Bangot today, and, um, whether the changes be made through his office, but it depends, I guess, what you're going to do with this document. Um, I don't know the legalities of whether you have to sometime put this on your website, or, um, and someone be in charge of changing that. We, what we want to do is make sure that all those changes going forward are put into the document.
Tricia, you want to think about that and see who should be the keeper of that document?
Has to be the hard copy of it now, I mean, the, it, who has it in a, uh?
Jean has the, uh, the secretary, Jean Martin.
Jean has it, has it on her computer?
Yes, she does.
Okay, great, all right.
And Jean's right back there.
Jean's right here.
Oh, Jean, sorry, didn't even see you.
Yeah, she's been great keeping us on task here.
Right, so can we have a motion?
Vote to adopt the re, uh, revisions recommended by the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
Aye.
All in, who, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
One quick question before you go.
Yeah.
In terms of getting a sign, as John talked about, on a state road on Three A, does the town have anything to do with that? No, so that's all through a state.
Mass highways.
Mass highways, yeah.
Okay.
And even some of the roads going into it, right? We run into that with some of the, um, side streets, what?
The abutting roads.
The abutting roads. They are in charge of that also.
Really?
Hmm.
Ah.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Steve, thank you.
Number ten is, uh, a discussion vote of setting a special town meeting date.
I'll move to set the town, uh, to set the date for a special town meeting for Monday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Any further discussion? We could do it Monday, Tuesday, any Monday seems?
Actually. I'm not sure if I'm going to be here. Joke be told, but I'm not changing the date for me, so Monday seems fine.
It'd be good to have everyone.
I agree.
Do you have a calendar?
Do. Hang on.
Are you in Japan, are you?
No, I am not. I'm not going to be in Japan.
That's a little joke. Rick, you'll watch this replay, we were thinking of you.
Little dig.
He's in Japan looking at tsunami stuff.
Hey, yeah, the twenty-fourth, I am out, but.
How about the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth is fine with me.
Trish, what do you think?
That's fine.
I am not going to be in, hang in, hang on, I can tell you that, so.
Sean, how's the, the twenty-fifth?
I'm always here.
So, we didn't, we had a second, we want to, do we want to start over again?
I'm just, uh, yeah, you know what, you had a second, I'll just, um, amend my motion to make it the Tuesday, October twenty-fifth.
And I'll second that one.
Second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is, actually, you know what, we skipped over one. Do I have to, do I have to say that we skipped over it?
Yeah, just say that it was withdrawn.
Uh, number nine, which was assigned a boatyard lease, has been withdrawn. We went over to number ten. Um, number eleven is other business. Does anybody have any?
I was just, can I just jump in, um, recreation, and I'm just going to, uh, give you just a one, two statement, um, synopsis of what's going on with the sailing program. There were some, um, sailing instructors that were former, probably students of the sailing program have come in at the last meeting and have asked if they could add another layer to the sailing program, and it had to do with being competitive with other towns, like a racing program. And I'm just going to leave it at that because it was just, it was the first time it was mentioned at the rec meeting. There were, um, you know, some, like I said, instructors there that presented this for the first time. They have to possibly update some boats, but maybe not. They're, they're looking to do something for next summer, just, uh, I was very impressed with what I saw at the meeting, and, you know, they, they will come in here and, you know, formally. And, you know, they will come in here and, you know, formally tell everyone what they're, what they like to do when they get a little further along. But just the whole idea of the sailing program, if you're involved, if your children are involved, or if you're involved in the signups. I mean, it's just, it's taken off to the point where they had a separate Saturday just for sailing, and it's kind of fun to see. So it's just kind of a positive thing that's going on in that. That's, that's all I had to.
Yeah, and you're at the signups, you know. People get there at 3:30 in the morning to get in line to.
And it's fun. Other than when they can't get the week they want, then it's not so fun, telling the parents that, you know. But they seem to all go away, have, you know, checked their schedules and get their children involved. So it's, you know, a great thing for the town.
Quick question I have. Is our next meeting, I'm looking at you, Sheila, but usually I look at Kim. Is our next meeting the Tuesday after Labor Day weekend, or is it actually going? Okay, it is. All right, fine.
I was going to bring that up under other business, so if you want to talk about it.
Sure. Well, we can, we can talk about the schedule. Right now, we have the 6th as set up. The good thing is we will have Rick here and possibly Joe here as well. And, but unfortunately, we won't have Tricia here.
Okay.
She's on vacation that week. The meeting after that, we haven't set the date yet. It's tentatively on the 20th. But Tricia won't be here that week, and I don't know if Rick's around that week. So we really have to look at everyone's schedule for the meeting after that one before we decide. But the next one will be on the 6th.
Yeah, I'll be back, I'll be back the Wednesday, the 21st. I'll be out of town for three days.
So maybe we can move it from Tuesday to Wednesday if we check everybody's schedule.
No, I have no, I only ask that because of events that are coming up the weekend after Labor Day weekend, which I was going to mention now, but I'll wait until the 6th and share it then, but.
So, so if you can look at your schedules and see if Wednesday, the 21st works as opposed to Tuesday, the 20th.
Just the only other thing I was going to say, I had a few discussions with a few people about sidewalks and bike paths. And one of the thoughts I had, maybe we, as a board, should think about in the next, you know, in the coming months, to reconstitute the sidewalk committee that we had done back four years ago, or, wait a minute, that's five years ago. Just to update, there's some other developments that have been put in. I know that Longtilden and maybe to kind of think about sidewalks to find out some other spots that may actually be more problematic. The problem is obviously, can you build sidewalks? Where's the money coming from? But I think it's always important to kind of update it. The other thing is maybe in conjunction with bike paths, obviously there's bike paths that were put down on the Driftway and now in Gannett and completing it, there's been suggestion of a bike path going down Hadley and then other bike paths going off to Neilgate Road. But maybe that committee could deal with both sidewalks and bike paths and kind of advise the board in a capacity to help out. So that was one of the thoughts I had. On a brighter note and funner note, not that sidewalks are not brighter, not exciting, but Labor Day weekend's coming up a week from Monday. And so Sand Hills, Situate Beach Association usually has a parade. It's the oldest parade in town since 1926, and that's on Sunday, September 4th, kicking off around 12 o'clock, I think it is. So a lot of people, if you haven't gone, go. Hummer Rock actually has a parade of horribles on Saturday. So it's nice to kind of finish the summer off. It's been a great summer. And if you'd like to see very hometown, folky, well-put-together little parades, if people get out, kids, please indulge yourself and go down to either one. They're great, great times.
And it goes, you can go right down Jericho Road and it loops Jericho Road and goes around.
Lighthouse to the point, comes back, and it's a short parade, and I know with the Hummer Rock the same. But it's, it's a great thing that the community puts together, so.
It is. It's a lot of fun. A couple of things. One thing, just a quick note. We get a report every week from different department heads, and we got one from the IT department this weekend. It's, when you read all the stuff that these people are doing, it's, it's pretty amazing. And it's great to get these concise management reports where we can look at it quickly and see what's going on and, and see where our, where the money, particularly in the IT, where it's a new position, what this person is actually doing. So I commend you on that and commend Bill for the work that he's doing. Another note, another committee that's put together and put a lot of time in together, the Pier 44 option is, has got a, has, that's, all of you people are probably thinking about this, that's coming to some sort of discussion period again. So I imagine within the next month or so, we'll be talking about that in more detail.
And the 44 Jericho Road looks nice. It's been painted, and the building's looking very nice.
Did we have a meeting since Heritage Days? I don't think so.
No.
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 I think, I think the event went very well. Unfortunately, Mother Nature, I see Anne back there, threw a little twist to us on Sunday, but we got a little sunshine at the end when Steven Tyler came and sang for a little while at Heritage Days, if you happen to be down there. Overall, I thought it was well-run, well-set up, a nice opening ceremony. Where Matt Brown told his stories and Jim Cantwell was there and Ed Cavell, and it got, it got off to a good start. I don't know how, there were a lot of booths there. I think when I went there on Sunday, people started clearing out because of the weather. But the bands were very good, and overall, I thought it was a successful event. I don't know, Anne, did you have any?
It was excellent. It really was. It was well-attended. Saturday was fabulous. Sunday, not so much. But then, as you pointed out, Steven Tyler showed up and sang three songs, including, I think, the closing one. But also, too, I think we need to recognize the fact that Jerry McMorro put this together, put the music. And, you know, the festival is really, aside from the crafters and the boat parade and what have you, it's really the music. That's what people come for. And he, as much as he's Jerry, it was quite a program.
No, he does, I, I think he draws a lot of the people outside of our community to come, to come to the community. It's a big community event with itself, with just the Chamber doing their stuff. But Jerry certainly does a lot of good work, and the bands that he gets are really, you know, popular bands. So it's good music and good entertainment, and you see a lot of people come to our town just to hear that. So, you know, thank you to the Chamber and everybody that put it together and.
I'd also like to say thank you to the Public Works, Mike Green in particular. Thank you to the police department. Brian Stewart was there with his son selling photographs. So it's become, that's become a family affair. The fire department was exemplary. There were no troubles at all, really. It was a job well done by everyone, and thank you to all of you as well.
And thank you to Jerry, as I was about to say, and all the other town departments that did. It was, it was really a good time. The other thing I wanted to add was a, well, a couple of things. We've got a DP, a Situate DPW day where kids can come down and see dump trucks and street sweepers and backhoes and climb on the equipment and get a sense for what they do. This is the first annual one. It's on August 26th, which is this Friday from 9:00 to 12:00. So if you're hanging around and your kids are going crazy, let them come climb on a dump truck. And that will be at the transfer station.
No.
Nope, that will be at Town Hall. It'll be right up front at Town Hall. And also coming up shortly, I don't know what the date is yet, is we're going to have another day where you can return your electronics and TVs and computers and all that stuff at a discounted rate or, or for free so people can, in the fall, clean out their, their old stuff.
Can I just say something on that?
Sure.
You know, I have to tell you, that's really nice. I saw the sign out there and I said, you know, you see these touch-a-truck things in different communities, and it's a great opportunity for the town to showcase what it has, the equipment, the trucks. Kids love it. And so I commend whoever came up with the idea. Good idea, and I hope, I know I'm going to try to get my kids down. I think it's just, you know, with all the equipment we have, the new equipment, why not showcase it? Let the kids take a look at it.
And it's a great job that Al does in terms of giving people the opportunity to get rid of electronics, pick up toys. All those extra events that they do are wonderful. I guess we can wrap up the baseball season here. We should be proud of our Situate teams. We won four district champions in these age groups. I'm not going to try and rattle them off except the nine A's that my son plays on. Good job, Matthew, and everybody else. And it was a very successful year for, for Situate against big, big towns. So the baseball program's doing well, and if you go out to the field behind us, you'll see we're transitioning to football. So good entertainment on the weekends and the fall as well. That's all I have for new business. Any other? Trish, do you have anything that we're? Great. Move on to item number 12, which is correspondence. I don't see any in here. So we can skip over that and go to item number 13 with this acceptance of the minutes.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to accept the meeting minutes of regular session and executive session dated August 23rd, 2000 and, I'm sorry, 2011. August 23rd, 2011.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. And now the last item. We're going to move into executive session for sale interest in real estate or labor negotiations. And we have a roll call?
Aye.
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 Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you on the 6th.
Good night, folks. Thank you, John.